Good morning, everyone. I've got 10:01 and we'll get started. I call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order on this October the 11th, 2022. I don't see any elected officials that joined us this morning. Marshall will bring forth the citizen's signup sheet. I appreciate that and turn off your phones if you've got them on. And Ms. Deidre Holden with our Elections Department, Director of our Elections Department is going to bring our invocation and lead us in the pledge this morning. Stand if you're able.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this day that you've given us, Lord, and I thank you for what an honor and privilege it is to be able to call ourselves Americans, Lord, and for our democratic process that we have, Lord, and I just want to thank you for each one of these commissioners and our county manager, God, that serves our county and does the very best that they can do, Lord, to make sure that everything goes according to your plan and purpose, Lord. I thank you for our department heads and for what they stand for and for the jobs that they do, Lord, our first responders, our police, our sheriffs, Lord. I pray, God, that you just keep your hand upon them, Lord. Lord be with us through this meeting and I pray that they make the decisions, Lord, that will do the jobs that need to be done in our county to make it the best place for us to live and raise our families, Lord. I love you and I praise you and I thank you for everything you do. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deidre, your blessing. Thank you. The minutes, the September 26th, 2022 work session minutes and the September 26th, 22 board meeting minutes are available for review. We have a special Employee of the Month that had fun recognizing a couple of weeks ago and that's going to be our Team Paulding segment this morning.
I feel like Jeff Harkins is a great candidate for this month's Employee of the Month because his job requires him to be flexible and adaptable with many different departments within the county and at different times, he doesn't have that standard eight-to-five job and I feel like he makes sure that the county is always represented well. So I have had the opportunity to work with Jeff and his team on a couple of projects for the Water Department. You see a five-minute video when you don't realize that it took an hour and a half or two hours to film and on-site, not to mention the editing.
One of the unique things about Jeff and his team, Phillip and the rest of Team Paulding is that, you know, a lot of folks don't realize that they go to just a wide variety of events and activities that are happening throughout the county. I think of a couple here just at the Sheriff's Office. We had the 9/11 ceremony that happens every year. We have the PPSA 5K race that happens up in the northern part of the county every year. And Jeff and his team are there at night, early in the morning. This year it happened to be Sunday morning for 9/11 and they were there right at 7 o'clock setting up. To capture that moment, capture those events, capture those stories to help in turn put such a quality production together to give out to the public so that they can be a part of that moment because, you know, with over 160,000 people in this county, not everybody can be at all places at all times.
The Board of Assessors wanted a way to get our message out of what was happening in the real estate market for calendar year '22. And we also wanted to come across with how a digest is produced. We got with Frank Baker. Frank recommended making a series of videos. So Jeff and his staff was with us every stretch of the way. They provided changes to the wording. They provided graphics to assist us in really getting our message across. I can't thank Jeff enough for all he does for all the departments, getting our message across to the public.
I think that deserves some applause. Another good one, Jeff Harkins and your team. So we have no invited guests, no bid awards this morning, no reports from committees and departments. No one signed up on our sheet here, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items. Item number two is to adopt Resolution 22-36, reappointing Ben Amerson to the Tax Assessor Board for a three-year term beginning January the 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2025. Item three is to authorize the chairman to sign the release of the development agreement with Georgia Paulding Unico 120 LLC. Number four is to authorize the chairman to approve the transfer of 7 point... $7,366.37 square feet. Alrighty, that's 7,366.37 square feet, which is .27 acres. And that's right away, that goes to GDOT for PI number 0015604 for a purchase price of $2,000. And number five is to the approval of the non-renewable... non-renewal of the contract for the rendering of a representation for indigent criminal defendants in the probate and magistrate courts of Paulding County, Georgia due to the transfer of the probate court traffic docket to the state court and for the county attorney to send notice of non-renewal. So those are the items that are on the consent agenda. Would any of the commissioners like to move those to regular business? I think some of these could... more information could really help the citizens understand what they're all about, but... Any of you have any questions? Our county manager can really enlighten you on any of these, so just leave it like that. We'll leave it on the consent agenda. Old business. Item number six is to discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the engineering services master agreement in the amount of $500,000. That's for one year, a one-year period with the option to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for preliminary and final engineering of transportation splotch projects. This was tabled at our last meeting on September the 26th, 2022, at the Board of Commissioners meeting and Mr. Jones is going to fill us in a little bit more.
Morning.
Morning. Again, we're requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve the engineering design services master agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers. This was tabled at the last meeting. I'd like to amend this agenda item to reduce the dollar amount from $500,000 to $250,000. This agreement will basically handle engineering design using an on-call consultant for work. Obviously, PC DOT with thinking of the amount of county roads in the county, roughly 1,000 plus the state highways. There's obviously a lot of work that goes on in terms of providing concepts, engineering designs for proposals and projects. We simply don't have the staff to be able to accommodate all the work requests that the preliminary engineering, our engineering department has to perform. So this is an effective way to handle the workload. I mean, at this point in time, we have four engineering positions. In our engineering department, we have one engineer right now. We have three vacancies. So this contract will help us try to keep up with the workload that we have. We've been utilizing Heath and Lineback for these services with the county since September 2016. They've done very well. This will be the fourth renewal of the 2016 contract. The last project, some of the last projects designed with this agreement has been Graves Road Sidewalk, which we will let out to construction bidding hopefully sometime this month. East Paulding Sidewalk, which will be letting out. Gullidge Road, Seven Hills Preliminary Engineering Design for an intersection. Nature Walk Parkway, Seven Hills Boulevard Roundabout. So those are the examples of the projects that these funds have gone towards. So again, I think it's a worthwhile way to use our money to get our work accomplished. So asking you to consider approval in the amount of $250,000 for this contract.
Any questions for George? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not as much question, just comment as far as this, since I am the one that tabled it, it's just the concerns. I mean, the cost per hour is, you know, alarming. It was alarming to me and I think even maybe Keith when I saw it. So the reason I wanted to table is just have more discussion as far as these are services that, like you said, we have positions open. You know, it's just getting deeper into it to see, you know, what do we need to do to maybe to hire? I mean, Paulding County is growing. It's not going to... we're going to continue to need these services or those positions to be filled is what I'd like to see instead of keep subbing it out is what I'd like to see because it's just very costly. As a businessman, I wouldn't do this at all because I couldn't afford it, you know. So to bring that aspect into this job, I'd just like to see is what we need to do, what can we do to hire those people to fill those positions for you, you know, so anyone?
I understand. You know, obviously when this contract is laid out, you've got certain employees who'll be doing work. They have levels from the, basically the principal in charge all the way down to, you know, lead engineers, engineers, technicians, et cetera, all the people who do this work and obviously their salaries vary depending on their responsibilities. So for example, you know, when this contract first started out, just the hourly salary for a technician was roughly $30 an hour. Right now it's $48 an hour. So that's the time difference between 2022 and 2016. You know, engineer, same thing, you know, principal in charge, everything. As you know, engineering salaries have risen over the last few years. We've discussed this multiple times. And unfortunately, if you're going to get quality work, get quality engineers, that's what you're paying if you're utilizing consultant rates. I would love to have a staff of qualified folks who could do this work, but right now, obviously, we're trying to handle the workload that we have. Like I said, I'd love to be able to, like I said, bring folks in.
Have some applications?
I don't believe we have anything right now, so.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Moving into new business, we only have two today. Item number seven is to discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-37, authorizing the filing of an application with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Section 5311 of the federal transit laws under Chapter 53 of Title 49 of the United States Code. Ms. Pollard, fill us in.
That's mouthful. This is a routine grant. We have, we apply every year with Georgia Department of Transportation. It is a federal grant and it allows us to, some assistance with our transit buses. So the total cost of that transit operation is about $235,000 and this is a grant of $58,951 that will go towards that operation. And we also include, they do purchase our, well, they purchase a portion of our buses. So we pay 10% of the bus cost and this has, hopefully, one bus will be included in it. We'll apply now and then we'll get the award in the spring. And one more thing, we did, we are required every year to do an advertisement for, to see if the public would request, would like to provide this service and so far we've never gotten any takers. So we offered the ability to have a public hearing, but we didn't have any requests, so we're ready to approve.
Do I get to test drive the new bus?
I don't see why not. You have a CDL.
And number eight on the new business, discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-38, a resolution of Paulding County, Georgia to adopt the 2022 update to the joint comprehensive plan for Paulding County. Ms. Lippman.
Thank you all. Good morning to everyone and I am pleased to bring to you Resolution 22-38, which is to adopt our updated comprehensive plan. Have just a little presentation to review how we got here today. To give you an overview of this project, this project is an update of our 2017 comprehensive plan and we are meeting one of our goals that was in our 2017 comprehensive plan, which was to join up the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive transportation plan at the same time and we are pleased to bring this to you and DOT will be bringing the CTP probably in December. As part of the scope of this project, we ask our consultants to do a special area study for some key crossroads and I'll go over that in a little bit. Just to give you a timeline of where we've been, we began this process back in November. Throughout the first part of the year, we have gone through several public meetings and we have a group, multi-jurisdictional work group. Commissioner Dunn is our commission member on there. We've had two meetings of that group. We submitted our draft to DCA back in August. They had several comments for us to address and we have received notice that we have accomplished that and that our plan meets the minimum requirements. So we're bringing to you today the adoption. This comprehensive plan update, we directly updated the existing document. We focused on updating the report of accomplishment. We looked at data trends from the past five years. We refined our needs and opportunities. We refined the future development map, which I'll show you in a little bit, and we did a new five-year work program. And not to get into too much depth, but we do have six goals. And then each one of those goals has an association, associated list of needs and opportunities. So we have six goals and we have 28 needs and opportunities and those are listed here and you can get a lot more information in the document. So moving on, I think a picture or a map, I'm a geographer, so a map is worth a thousand words. This is our old future development map. It was fairly simple, but it was a little murky, so we have done two changes to the map. This is our updated future development map. You can see that some of the transportation elements, they're going to come separately, but we have the same basic corridor areas. We have the conservation character area, the community residential character area. Those two are pretty much, that's the east and the west side and you'll see this new feature. We have a suburban growth line. That is something with this plan that we are saying that we do not want suburban growth to go beyond that line. We have crossroad character areas. Those have been refined. We reduced a few of those. And just to give you, there are four types of crossroad character areas. We have one high-intensity sewered crossroad area. That is at 278 and 92, focused on that intersection in Hiram. We have sewered crossroad communities, unsewered crossroad communities, and Silver Comet Trailheads. And each one of those in the document, each one of those crossroads is parcel-specific and then around it, I'll mention later, an influence area. As a support to our future development map, we have what is called the Supporting MOP Policy Map and that map has four areas highlighted. We have employment areas. We have several notated. I'll highlight the top three, the Paulding County Airport, the Hospital Wellness District, and Highway 92. We have also further designated the Richland Creek Recreation Area that is surrounding our new reservoir. We have two other areas on this map. Every one of the crossroad community that is in a sewered area has an area of influence. Since we did go to a parcel-specific boundary, we wanted, just because something might not be in that parcel area, it's in that influence area, so the same considerations can be brought. We also have community character corridors. These are corridors that we want to preserve the way they look today. As you can see, there are several of those in the western and even in the central part of the county. We want to really steer development to our crossroad communities. Next thing that is a component of the program is the Short Term Work Program. It's a list of projects, actions, initiatives, community will use to implement its comprehensive plan. And we have, let's see, let me go hit some of the highlights. This is, let me mention, this is a joint comprehensive plan. This is done for Paulding County and its three cities. Between the three of us, we have, four of us, sorry, I didn't mean to forget somebody, we have 201 short-term work program items. The county has the most with 116. Dallas has 37, Hiram 26, and Braswell 22. The next part of the slide shows the amount, one of the requirements is that we have to put a cost estimate. So for projects that had a fixed cost estimate, total, all four of us are about $660 million. And that's not including projects that are staff time. So I dare say we have planned our next five years with a billion dollars' worth of things that we wish to accomplish. And I mentioned earlier, the needs and opportunity, just wanted to hit what some of the top ones were. Because we have incorporated parts of the comprehensive transportation plan, the number one reference need and opportunity was to enhance safe multimodal activity. The second, and I think this is something to be proud of, is commitment to maintenance of infrastructure investments. We also had high number of investment in walkable downtowns or in historic downtowns and to create walkable places and to increase connectivity and access. Earlier, I mentioned the special area studies. This map shows those five areas. They are Crossroads, New Hope, California Community that's off 120, the Hospital Wellness District, and New Georgia in the southern part of the county. Now, this is a separate document that has land use planning and transportation integrated and those can be used whenever any rezoning in those areas are considered. So what's next? The next thing, we need to adopt the comprehensive plan with the resolution and submit that to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs by October 31st of this month in order to maintain our qualified local government status. We need to start work on implementing items from the Short Term Work Program and continue coordinating with the CTP and I'll put a plug in for the CTP. The survey is still open. If anybody would like to provide feedback and look at the full list of projects. We only have in this plan five-year projects, but there's even further range out and that can be found at www.pauldingchartingcourse.com. So that is the end and I will be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. Thank you very much.
Just a great brief, yeah.
Thank you.
Exciting. Conclusion of our regular business at 10:22. So we're going to get Mary Carol Sheffield to come talk to us about something. So we've got a couple of people that are going to speak here. Well, maybe just, I don't see Tim Sudrith today. But Tim Estes, you're going to make your way up to talk on voting machines? And where's your twin brother, Tim?
Well, I was going to tell you. He called me just a few minutes ago and he had a family challenge and he needs, it needs his attention, so I'm going to be kind of going over both of the topics, voting machine and upcoming elections, if that's okay. Thank you, commissioners, for having me again and listening to our concerns. We are 28 days away from election, four weeks, so I hope you are prepared as I am. I'm a Paulding County resident for 40 years. I love this county. I love our officers. I love our staff. Deidre's actually on, if I can bring her out, she's on TV. She's a Hollywood person now. So you'll have to, you'll have to watch her segment. With over 70% of the Americans, including me, which I know you know how I feel, we still don't trust the machines. Now, there's been a lot of evidence. There's been a lot of stuff that says we need to see it. There's been, it's been ruled illegal. They've had all kinds of experts from hackers to internet people. It says, you know, it can be hacked even on 5G, the people there, testimonies from forensic and computer experts, whistleblowers, and the list goes on and on. So there's been a lot of evidence. And we, as a group of the 70%, we have belief and faith that our elections need to be more fair and we are, we are standing on Second Chronicles 720, 714, and also Ephesians 2:8, where God does intervene in all kinds of situations. And it's going to happen. There's no doubt in my mind because he is in control. We do have a Plan B though, and the Plan B is the upcoming elections. We're going to flood the polls like you've never seen before. We're banding together. We have a, we have a plan of action that if those machines are being manipulated, the votes are going to be so great in one direction for the Americans, for the true Americans, to keep this country free. We love and we fight for this country and we will never stop. In the past, we did. In the present, we are. And in the future, we will continue to fight for our freedom and our right for the United States. I fought six years in the military for that. People have died for that and we will not give up. God bless you and God bless all of our leaders. And I will tell you, I'll end with a Winston Churchill statement that he did at a college. And I will tell you, I'll end with a Winston Churchill statement that he did at a college that they asked, what's the most important thing in life? And he said, never, 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 I mean, never give up. So we won't get up until we get the results that we want to keep this country free and to keep it honest and very transparent. Now, I do, I've got three minutes, if y'all will let me. We knock on doors, we do everything. I have the voting records for all the candidates coming up on November the 8th, and if you'll let me, I'll put them on the table. If you won't let me, then if you come to me, I'd be glad to give you one. So can I put them on the table?
You can make them available after the meeting, only because the public participation is, there's a specific prohibition that you cannot advocate for against any candidates. I know that these are the records, but I think the best thing is probably to make them available on the table.
They're, you can see me or my wife, and you're mighty welcome, and it's documented on their records where to find it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim Estes, valuable citizen, in my opinion. All right, that's almost here to the, the end. We want to ask for comments, or I want to ask for comments and announcements from our commissioners, and I'll just go first. I am happy to see former Commissioner Chuck Hart in this room, and glad that he came to buy us all lunch.
Amen.
Yeah, and also glad to see Randy Harris, Public Defender, Director, in the room, too. So thanks for being here, Randy. I guess that's negative, right? So all I need to wrap this up is...
I would be remiss if I didn't remind everyone, I'm sure that all of you present are registered to vote, but if someone is watching and they're not registered, today is the last day to register to vote, because yesterday was a holiday. So today is your last day. If you are 17 and a half or older, you can register, but you cannot vote until you're 18. So please go ahead and register today if you are not registered to vote. Thank you.
May I ask you something? All right, I just need a, or don't have any executive session this morning, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Kaker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Christopher Stover. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.